One of those that just joined. Are you here for solving?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes. Yep, so I was just gonna introduce the folks who are on from Solvay Bank. So this is Amber Cavalero. And she is the retail bank manager. And also with us this morning is Bill Murphy Senior, who is the special projects coordinator. Good morning, and you all with me. So, yes.
Okay. Sounds like you guys have been working back and forth through the office. You've got some of our initial concepts, thoughts, ideas. Can you update us on where you stand right now?
So, we stood as we were waiting for some information around the front yard, and we heard from Eric that the front yard is the front yard. And what we did from there is worked with the Solvay Bank team to develop a couple more concepts that potentially we could share with you this morning. In addition to the concepts that we shared with you previously, one of which, I believe, would be in the same position where the drive-through would be in the front yard.
So you have more, more stuff to share? You can go ahead and share that if they're able to.
Okay.
Hold on, we're gonna, we're gonna give you ability to share here.
Okay. So we've kept, we've kept the board's feedback in mind here, and we've also kept the Solvay Bank team's feedback in mind. We, we have not vetted any of this with Wegmans yet. We have been working with them in the process, but we just felt it was more important to get aligned with you folks first, and then go back to Wegmans and figure out what we need to do to get that in a good place. So, this first option, there, there are four options here. The, the bank really only likes this first one. We did do this study, so we just felt it was good to share it with you. Stays completely on the original parcel. And we've positioned the building as far to the left as possible, and back as far as possible, so that the building line stays within the, the setback opportunity. We have the entrance oriented, you know, perpendicular and parallel to Wegmans, which is a desire of the Solvay Bank team to try to maintain that. And then we have room for about 80 feet here of stacking of vehicles. So, you know, four smaller vehicles, three larger trucks. We have one drive-through lane that is an ATM, that's this inside lane, and then we have the outside lane, which is the, the tube lane. And that tube lane, you know, we have, we have room for 80 feet. We then have the easement to deal with. But in this center section, where we're giving a nice gentle merging, turning radius to staff parking, and then utilizing the path across and in to the bank. On each side of the utility easement, we plan to utilize this for some retention here to be able to catch some of the stormwater. And if we have to, we can, we can create some more. But the idea is these would link together with a single pipe, and then they would have a stabilized outflow to the existing catch basin, which is approximately right here. The second option to take you through gets us to a single curb cut, more aligned with the Wegmans, but it's a little tight. This is a minimum inside like 15-foot turn radius, so it's, it's tight, you know. It's also, you know, it, it's, it's tight. It does, does fit. But there are some buildings, I think, into it that maybe technically meet, but don't, the customers don't have a good experience driving through the drive-through, so it becomes a challenge. The next option that we have goes into this triangle a little bit to see if it gets us anything. And it really doesn't, because it comes back to getting to the front to keep the drive-through on the right side of the building for the vehicle to interact with. And this sticks out into that front yard a little bit, so we would be trying to consider a variance here for the building off of James Street to kind of poke out a little. But this is a confusing racetrack type of, it's a lot of pavement, a lot of tarvia. We, we, we don't really view this as a viable alternative. But we wanted to bring this up, because if, if the board was amenable to possibly a, a small variance, we feel like we can make this one work better if, if they really want to go in this direction. This would give us 26-foot more gentle turn into that first lane, 26-foot out, double traffic to the parking. And, and those are the four options. So I feel like I've talked a lot. I'm sorry if I went too fast. I'm happy to flashback through them for you.
I mean, I think in reality, your assessments are probably pretty accurate. If you can go back to the first one.
Sure.
I mean, those, those other turns are probably pretty tight.
Yeah, but we have, we have more room. You know, this, this turn here is very gentle. And, you know, we, we could make this a little bigger, I think, in reality. But, but this is a definitely a very easy on traffic.
I think, is there an opportunity, I mean, you've not run this through Wegmans yet, so.
I think you might need a stacking variance for this one or some of the other ones.
This, 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 this definitely requires a stacking variance. We're aware of that. Sorry, I didn't mention that when we went through it. I believe your stacking requirements here would be five and three. And in that 80 feet, I think we can get, you know, maybe four and four.
Yeah, it's, it's five for the teller, or for the teller window, and four for ATM.
Okay, so we would need a variance of one, I believe, in the teller window here.
And that's the right side?
That would be the, that would be the outside. The, the right side inside is the ATM, because the ATM has the, the structure, it really wants to reside in the building for, for security purposes and for access to the vault and whatnot. So, we, the outside lane is a tube lane, drive-through with visual access through a window to interact with the teller. But the documents go up and over and down to the surface that the teller works at via a tube. So that outside lane would have, this lane here would have, be able to stack four, and, and we need five is the requirement.
Are you, are you getting all of your parking on-site? There's no need?
No, no, we're not. So, so we've also discussed with Eric that there's 371 spaces on-site, and like 314 are required. And we are at six parking spaces in this layout with the ability to add a couple more if the board desired. We were trying to minimize the need and, and stay within the confines of the lease as it stands right now. And I believe the lease at present calls for six to eight parking spaces on-site. So, we, we wanted to provide some parking, but not necessarily the full 15 that is required by the, the ordinance, and since the shopping center has enough capacity, it, it seems reasonable that some of the parking in front here would be associated with the building and, and people coming and going into the building.
So we'll just need to make sure that there's an agreement between you and Wegmans that's gotta be reviewed by Jamie for whatever part is determined to be on or off-site, I guess.
So parking review of lease by Jamie to integrate rights to parcel. And you'll probably want to see that maybe on the survey, on the proposed survey map, it'd be via some sort of easement document?
But it, it can't be just an agreement, right? It has to be.
Well, I think that's what the easement, I think that's the easement language as per.
Well, yeah, I think that's what I was going for. It has to be more of an easement, because if you sold it to somebody else, it still needs to stay with the land.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's your full easement.
Yeah, so.
It'll have to be, it'll have to be determined and referenced on the drawings, but yes, it is a full easement.
Yep, so it's an easement, and we can work with Jamie to better define what that needs to be.
Yep. Thoughts from this board on the various options?
So, on this option, we're looking at, or potentially looking at a variance for stacking, but not a variance for the front yard setback. What, what if it was the opposite? What if it did encroach more into the front yard, so that you could get the stacking in there? I think what I'm highly concerned with the stacking variance is that if, in fact, regardless of the, the variance, if folks are backed up, they're backing up into the main aisle of Wegmans, potentially, which I think is a, is a problem. I would almost rather look at a variance to the front yard setback to solve that.
We definitely can push the building further back, and as we push further back, you know, we can't go anymore to the right.
That's exactly, so you're, you kind of almost have to go directly page north with that building in order to make it work. And how far page north do you need to push the building in order to gain another 20 feet for a car? Is that what you need? How many?
Yeah, 20 feet, and, and I would say if we pushed it all the way up to like the tree line, if we got rid of one tree, you know, I mean, I don't think we're gonna be able to get that close to that tree and have it survive. But if we take this tree out and push it back, we gotta push back like 20 feet. So, it, it's gotta go quite a bit page north to get there. One parking length depth is 20 feet, so it would be up in here.
We did a little bit of research on our, our normal drive-through transactions as well. In an average day for the last two branches that we've opened and built, that are now established branches, we are seeing, seeing anywhere from 20 to 21 drive-through transactions in the entire working day with a max of 30, that's usually on a Friday. So, what, what we're likely to see is, is less of a stacking issue in either lane because of that, that number. We're not seeing, and transactions are, are limited through our drive-throughs. We don't allow more than three per car. And teller transactions range from two to four minutes at most. So just to help, would give you some data around what we see through those drive-throughs.
All right, any other questions from this board on this?
Is that, is that in support of a possible stacking variance that you're, you're presenting that, and is that something we want to talk about?
Well, the reason, I'd like to share the information just based on what we see. I certainly understand that if we were no longer to occupy this building, that there could be a very different, you know, set of norms. We have no intention of not occupying this building for, for a long time going forward, but I, I think that it would support, certainly if we could move the building back a bit more, as Bill Murphy had mentioned, that would help, but also to understand that the likelihood with our residents would be much lower of that becoming an issue.
So, let's say, for example, if, if McDonald's decided they wanted to go, go there, it would be a change of use. They would not, well, except it's a variance on the drive-through stacking. Even with the change of use, that would, that's the problem.
It would still care.
Could the language be set up so that the, the variance goes with your business use that if it changed?
No.
It can't be set up that way?
Yeah, yeah, it can't have that kind of a condition.
Yeah, but are you just, the variance that would carry, that's just for one car? Jamie, because like a restaurant has different stacking requirements than a bank. Like they have stacking requirements before you get to the order window.
Oh, they have even more stacking requirements, okay. Right. Right, so I think, yes, so it would be the stacking.
They would just get one car off, would be the variance.
Right, you can't just, you can't just reuse that drive-through. It's a whole different, it's a whole different use and standard. So, yeah, I think we could get that. I, I thought it was the same. I wasn't really thinking.
Yeah, because it goes from the order box and then the box, the window, so there's two different stacking requirements for restaurants. It looks like the corner of the building would still need a little.
So that's the, that's the roof overhang.
Oh, okay.
I think we're allowed to project there. And, and the wall of the building is within the property line. That's the dash line.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm using every bit of the site that I'm allowed to use. And, and I will say that the further we move it, even if it's slightly into that front yard, it gives just slightly more room for a few more vehicles to be comfortably stacked.
Yeah, I mean, it would have to be significant moving it up in order to gain room for a whole other car.
Well, is it necessary, I mean, why couldn't you kind of break the, the geometry? So the building is more square to James Street, and the drive-through is a kind of a, a broken line. That would allow you to get more of the building to the north, right, potentially? Have you tried something like that?
We, we've looked at several that push, push kind of further up in here. What, what hap, it, it just, it, it still becomes tricky. If you recall, I, I, I don't know, we, we've looked at several different iterations. I, I can share some of the previous sketches that, that pushed up into here.
Yeah, I mean, sharing them is great. I mean, sharing these with us would be good as well, so that we can actually look at them.
Sure.
A little bit more of that.
This, this one had it on the other side, you know. We, we hesitate to get, I guess, too, too far this way. It just starts to, you can see here in our, we're, we're about as far to the left as we could be.
Yeah, but in that one, that puts that drive-through on the wrong side of the building.
Yes, I agree, totally. So, at present, where we are, is here. And I think, you know, as we try to move this to the left, we get into the front yard. But you're saying to turn, and I think, I think what's hard with turning the building is it puts the teller almost in like a 180 position to enter, it, it has to put her back to the door, if I'm not mistaken, almost, to interact with the drive-through customer. And that's, I think, what it was from the bank's standpoint. So this third teller would be the one on the far left inside, and, and she would man.
I think I got it. They had a pop-up that was hiding. Okay, you said, all right.
So with respect to the front yard encroachment, I, I have no opinion on that, however, we, there have been variances for front yard. Is there something in this case, board, that would look at a recommendation for that kind of a?
I think I'd wanna look at what other buildings are adjacent, if you can, if you can draw that line of two points from two other buildings that are maybe closer to the street than that, you know, we can pull the building up into the front yard with a recommendation there.
Are we, however, is it going to be, are those existing trees, or are there going to be more trees?
And these trees are existing, these trees are existing, yes. And, and I do believe that we would have additional screening trees as per our previous full proposals around the drive-through lane to, to shield that more. So this, this is a concept, very much a concept, not, not trying to.
Yeah, what I'd like to do right now, just because we are over our time, is, no, and that's absolutely fine, is just kind of get a quick straw poll from the board in terms of option. If option one seems in concept to address the issues that we've had. And if that's the case, ask that the applicant go and kind of develop this a little bit further in order to kind of show us a full pulse. Are there any objections or questions from this board?
I'm, I'm okay with the circulation. I do think there are opportunities to, there are opportunities to get some, some more stacking in there, at least to demonstrate that those have been explored. I think that'll be important for variance, to say that efforts have been made to get it in there. And I would support encroaching into the front yard if that helps with the building.
I'm a Doug at this life, I'm a Doug on, on this also. I, one thing I could understand is, is as it sits right now in option one, is the stacking exactly a certain number of cars, or is it a certain number of cars plus a little, so we don't need a full additional 20 feet?
Right. And I think, I think, Leif, I think, Leif, that's what I was trying to say, is right now, we're like right at the minimum. So if, if we push in just even a couple feet, we're gaining some length for vehicles to comfortably stack.
Yeah, but I know our code has a certain number at a certain distance, so it's, it's, I guess, how far we gotta go to get, hit that minimum number of, of footage behind the, for the stack versus just adding 20 feet? Is it, is it, is it, do we get there by adding 10 feet? Or do we get there, do we gotta add a full 20-foot bush on the building?
I, I'll, I'll, I'll put the chart together and kind of show, show you what the impact of that would be.
Okay, that'd be great.
Does the stack start at the end of the?
The, yeah, the, yeah, the, I, I would assume it starts at the end of the parking stalls on the front.
Yeah, I, I started the stack here. This is where that 80-foot dimension is coming from.
That would also have to be included in whatever easement is there, is that that language includes, you know.
The ingress and egress to the parcel. Yep, so the ingress and egress to the parcel is covered in the lease, and it, it's through this property line. And then we just have to get it approved by Wegmans, so I, I, we will get the, the parking lane easement covered there, yep.
All right, so, take these comments into consideration. Push the design, the layout, take this option. I think this is probably headed in the right direction.
Yeah.
Develop it, and then you can circulate it back through this office. You don't need to, to wait for another session if you want kind of some quick feedback.
Okay, so just email it over to Eric and.
Yep, to Eric and Alana, and then she'll, or they will circulate it to the board. We can get Jamie comments. Keep you moving in the right direction.
Great. If I could just make a couple comments. Wegmans in principle has seen a previous version of this, not this, and they somewhat agreed with it. They also agreed with us minimizing our parking. They understood the board's concern. They just wanted to try to have us get as much parking on our site as possible, which the architects tried to do. So they're in general in agreement with what we're seeing here. I'm not anticipating a huge issue from them.
Great. All right. Do you have your direction?
Yes, thank you very much.
Wonderful. All right, thank you for, you know, exploring the various options. Look forward to developing this one a little bit further.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Pathology, welcome.
Morning. You guys have files?
I.
I do have them, but you can, are they all in here?
I do have, yeah, it's fine. You want anything different on there? Like we have some little bit more recent allegations that we have to look for.
Yeah, we'll, we'll wanna talk a little bit about those allegations.
Yeah, sure. Can we, yeah. Or would you like to start site, site plan?
Let's start with the site plan.
I have an order.
Can you, while you're looking for that, can somebody update us on your thought on timeline? I mean, this is not gonna be a yesterday kind of approval. There's still a lot of steps that we gotta go through here, so I wanna make sure that we're all on the same page in terms of expectations for approvals.
Well, I think our expectations, I'm sure, are opposed to each other. We went and saw them earlier, but we understand the process, we understand the history, we understand what's gonna get done.
Right.
And magnitude of the project, so we're gonna try to work expeditions as soon as possible. And I'm thinking all of those are cool.
Okay, because we'll have, you know, we gotta go seeker, we've gotta do ZBA. I mean, there's a lot of little steps in here, so I just wanna make sure that this wasn't, you know, you looking at October approvals.
Well, we certainly would like that, but we won't, we won't, we're collecting, collecting with together.
Okay.
Nate, I'm gonna jump on my phone to resume, so.
Okay. So, yeah, so I mean, as John mentioned, I mean, certainly we, you know, stuff has been submitted, a few folks have seen things. I, I guess the goal would be to get the project through the approval processes as quickly as possible. You know, everything still has to be, we had variants, things like that, so. You know, ideally, I think they would like to start, you know, construction building portion within the areas that are, are available on the site already, without having to worry about clearing additional trees and which would start and potentially remember when the window opens back up to not worry about the bad scenario. Overall, so the project hasn't changed since we were first there. You know, it's a three-story, 108,000-square-foot pathology lab adjacent to the bone and joint center. I'll start with the aerial. I know it's a little bit harder to see it and jump to one that does have the aerial, but the bone and joint sits here. Existing retention stormwater ponds, I need to use the cursor.
I'm gonna just share so the board that's on that can see.
Thank you.
No, I'm not gonna be able to see, I am gonna. Gonna use the cursor, I like, so we can see that. So, bone and joint center down here, the existing drive, which is 6620 Fly Road, is the, is going to be the primary access point for the new, new development, three-story pathology lab, parking in the back, our proposed stormwater detention facilities. I mean, there's several water quality features around the site that mitigate our water quality and runoff reduction and stuff that are adjacent to parking areas. But overall, the, the main stormwater quality detention facility is at the lower end of the site. That will then discharge over into the existing retention ponds that are in place for the bone and joint center. And then ultimately, I think that flows over into along the 104 corridor. We're mitigating 100%, we're actually reducing stormwater slightly from our site into those ponds, so. There's an existing culvert that crosses, and we're utilizing that connection for stormwater. Sanitary, we are running our utilities up along our parcel, bringing it over. There's a county. There's a main trunk sewer over there. We're proposing our connection over there. We've worked with the county in that already. They provided some sewer offset mitigation. There's a couple of manholes actually in that line that they wanted. That they wanted, uh, the, the rims raised and replaced, um, and, and they, they have additional layers on the top. So we proposed that on the site, so we satisfied their, um, their requirements, uh, to make connection to the sewer over there, so we're good with that. Um, electric gas will be coming off fly road, uh, pretty much down the existing corridor that our joint also runs there. Um, uh, utilities on, uh, water connection out on the front. Um, so we're proposing, uh, parking spaces here, let me. If I X out of this and go into another file, is I gonna screw up what they're saying? This one?
USB drive.
Uh, USB drive.
D? Let's see. Looking for number two. Okay, but I don't see it.
To the right of three.
Oh, right there, hey. Alright, this one will be a little bit more. There you go, so this one's a little bit clearer for everybody. So we are proposing two hundred and seventy-three spaces on the site, and it would be seven hundred and twenty-six. Are required by code. So that's the one variance that we are going to be requesting on.
Which number?
Uh, we have two hundred and seventy-three spaces proposed on site. We show two hundred and seventy-eight, uh, future spaces, uh, across the main entrance drive. So there is a lot that accommodates that, so that's five hundred and fifty-one spaces total, it's our understanding the board. Uh, if they were to, um, create about twenty-five percent reduction on the.
What is the required?
Code requirement is seven hundred and twenty-six spaces, which is one space. So twenty-five percent reduction would be a hundred and eighty-two spaces, um, I think that results in, uh, so. We have five hundred and fifty-one with our two seventy-three part, two seventy-three future we cover. You know, what, what the town would be able to allow by a hundred and eighty-two space reduction. We have enough space to cover that, but we. So, you know, bone and joint or, uh, uh, upstate pathology. Uh, you know, they, they know the number of employees here, this is not a public facility, so you're, you're really, um, we're just trying to park. That I think, I believe they're parked two hundred and fifty spaces for their, for people, some commute, uh, things like that, so they know the number of spaces they need. We're looking to try to. In addition, we're trying to maintain, uh, you know, as much of the vegetated buffer between fly road and the front as possible. So anything outside the grading limits is certainly. And it's, if you found the site, you can see there's a pretty significant combination difference there as well, so. Really, the site from fly road will be difficult. So it's, there's a couple of layers to this, that we'll talk about these points as we kind of go through the rest of your presentation, but we talked about parking. That's here, you know, I think you guys made a presentation that two hundred and seventy-three is required. By your current needs assessment.
Right.
That. We maintain that you need to show sufficient parking on the other side of the street.
Right.
In the event that pathology ever leaves, I mean, another lab building, another lab facility that has more people, we need to make sure that we're providing that parking on that side of the street.
Yep.
We need to make sure we, what is further than all of the parking that's on the other side of the street is a compliant and designed. So any of your, your grading layouts, all that stuff needs to be designed for the other side to show that it, it does actually work. Over there, first. For the others to make sure that the, the stall sizes are the correct size, because. From the assessments that we have, those aren't the correct stall sizes. Which means you're either going to extend further to the east, closer to four eighty-one with this parking. You know, or it's not actually gonna fit the way that you want it to fit, so this, that needs to be fully thought out, out there.
Okay.
And executed as part of this package.
Okay.
And then that should be in as, you know, to be placed in reserve.
So are we, are we, are we talking two things, first, are we talking about. Parking the entire code requirement, not just if we were looking at the variance?
I think there's, you're gonna be. The more parking you can show that can be over there and, and do this in such a way that. The first bay could be a phase one, the second bay could be a phase two, or maybe a phase three, so that it could be. Implemented in chunks. But the more that you can show that fits on that other side, the easier that recommendation is to ZBA.
So, so like the entire seven hundred and twenty-six.
If you can fit seven hundred and twenty-six and show it phased and four separate. Chunks on the other side, you're setting yourself up for better success. Than us making the recommendation for a hundred and eighty-two spots to just be wiped off and then whatever's left over. Chilled in here, I think it's, it, it makes a stronger argument.
Yeah.
That we've done our due diligence, that this is actually a viable site.
Yeah. So, um, just a couple of comments, I mean, so I, I, we did submit, uh, I think about four or five, uh, concepts, I think I have them on this disc as well. I'd be happy to share, that show different scenarios, cause there are four or five, there's, you know, we could extend, you know, the parking lot.
Right.
We could extend the parking lot, we could build underground storm sewer sys-, you know, systems built over. You know, the open ponds, things like that, so some spaces would be here, some spaces would be there, I believe there's a parking garage option.
Right, we asked that, that was the due diligence to show that, you know, you can actually get the full amount on the site.
Sure, 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 so what I'm trying to understand from that point is, you know, design wise, cause I didn't. I think when we initially talked about, you know, variance is kind of a part, we didn't design the structure, you know, I mean, like grade it, uh, stormwater, I mean, that, that's a pretty significant effort. Especially not knowing what you're.
Well, that, that was, that effort was. For the benefit of you, benefit of us, to figure out, make sure that. This is a viable site, you can show us and you can demonstrate to us that you can get all of the parking on there, and part of that was parking all of that. On the park. And the parking, I think, can still extend to the east, you still have room on the east to extend that, and I think if I recall, you had shown us that you could park everything up there.
Yep.
For the balance.
Right.
So that, I think, is what we want to show that you can. You can park all of that.
Right.
Up there, in the event that. This becomes a, a different type of laboratory and there's seven hundred people there that need to, to park, how are we gonna park all those people that are up there?
Yeah.
So the, the grading is to actually show us, because there is, there's a steep berm and all that stuff back there. Show us that, that, that parking actually works.
Yeah.
Back there.
Right.
And the stall sizes, I think, are being shown at nine foot when they're supposed to be nine foot six, so that's gonna take your whole parking and start to extend it.
Yeah.
That's out there, so I think that's all we want. On, on that part is to, to max out as much as you possibly can up there to show us. In there, and then if that reserve chunk is sixty instead of a hundred and eighty. That's easier, and then we have a, a phased. Expansion parking lot up there, I mean, this board. Would love to just leave it all green space. You know, and not touch it and just have your two seventy-three. In the event that you have more than two hundred and seventy-three people there and they start parking a bone and joint or parking on the street. We're gonna require that you start building this thing in chunks, so we wanna find a way that we can build, you know, a small piece of that first, maybe the second piece, the third. And, and reserve as much of that green space as we can. But you need to show us that that whole parking area up at the top works.
Yeah, 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 and we, we can do that, I mean, the, so, site planning wise, we've done that already, we, but we haven't, you know. The actual design of it is something else, like actually grading and doing all the stormwater design and stuff upfront. Because there's a lot of approaches you could use, you could use underground, you could do surface drainage, you, you know, things like that.
Well, I think Mark's gonna wanna see it, I think we're gonna wanna see what, what that is, I mean, it's. It's great to show us that in space it works, but in, in practice it may not, so I think that's the.
Would you mind if we try an ex-, uh, um, exhaust? Like where the, the ponds are to the east side first, before we even get across the street?
Say that again?
Would it be, would the, the board be okay if we designed this? As what, what may be the first step? You know, as you mentioned phasing, maybe this is the first phase, then that becomes the second and the third phase.
You mean, cover up the retention ponds with a parking?
Yeah, I mean, it would essentially become an underground detention system is what we do, I mean, we've looked at, I think, I can't remember, it's a hundred and thirty, forty, fifty spaces, something like that. Well, you, you know, you could cap that, put an underground system in there, um, and then park over it, you know, I mean, that, that's where John's kinda getting at, I mean, that would. Essentially be kind of a phase one plan, it would be, hey, we're gonna replace this, because it's real estate, you know, people.
Is there a, 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 a date mature tree right in the middle and all that stuff?
Uh, no, so the, the oak tree is right here, so we've done a layout avoiding that, keeping that, we, we still want our pedestrian connection and things like that.
Un- unfortunately, um, in one of these windstorms we had the last month, we lost a big limb. And I said, it's, it was a, um, horizontal limb, it's probably three feet diameter. And when you look inside, it's unfortunate. But, we're, and this, this, these plans have all avoided that.
Yeah. Yeah, we've created this, the, the site, so that we've avoided that, and you still, you know, if, if the tree is salvageable, then I suppose.
Well, I don't think, eh, eh, either way, we're not going near that tree, so.
Um, but that, you know, that would kind of be plan one, would, I would assume would be start to develop that, you know, but. But, you know, if we're getting into where we have to supply, you know, an underground system to show, you know, I mean, it can be built, I mean, do we need to supply all those? That's. It's a, like a whole other track in designing, but.
No, understood, but I think. I don't think. Is it technically feasible is the question that would just need to be answered?
Right.
That would, and Mark would have to answer that too.
Right, uh, it's, it would be in our, everyone's best interest if you, the next phase of parking that may have to be developed.
Yeah, I mean, site plan wise. I think I appreciated setting up that natural environment between the two buildings, concealing the parking behind the building as much as possible.
My preference, I don't know, I'd wanna just see that turn into a. basketball parking lot. But. You also safely have to get people into the building from that parking field, which is, which is a little bit of a challenge and.
But we'll talk about that with the elevations, is, you know, what directions to build, and actually pointing and how you access it. But site wise. I think you, you really need to make sure that you're presenting. How this site is gonna function at full capacity. And then we'll scale it back from there to what is needed for initial development versus what's there. Necessary future development. Yeah, I think when we're talking about like, you know, grading and the firms and stuff along the parking backs, make sure that we can maintain our grades from the, the. Retention ponds on that side, up to where the parking is, going the other direction, making sure that like. You know, your, your parking grades actually work in there and your, in code. Uh, for the parking field in the back, so just making sure all that works and demonstrating to us that's a. A compliant parking field up there. Right? Do you wanna talk about like, site access, building orientation, you know, how you situated the building on site?
Yeah, sure, so the, the main entrance, uh, into the, into the pathology lab is from the parking lot side.
Let me just ask this question as, as you get going, your determination is fly road is the front yard. The access road is the backyard. Or rear yard. At the back of the building, so the back of the building is what's facing four eighty-one, front of the building is what's facing the hillside into fly.
Correct. I mean, we, I, I, you know, site planning wise, we're, we are, um, you know, I mean, we're essentially maintaining enough setback. So that higher duty case, um, depending where you are, I mean, we're certainly far enough off on both sides of the face. Away from, you know, if you wanted to consider one oh four. I mean, the main, the, the, there's no property line along the main entrance really, so, you know, really, front would be way over on, on the four. Um, but yes, we're maintaining the front yard towards fly road.
And that's, that's a big hillside, very tree.
Very tree, yeah.
What's your view shed from fly road down to the building?
Um, you essentially, even with a three-story building, you won't be able to see the top of the building from, you know. The southern half, the only point where you'll be able to see it is as you kind of, as fly road climbs up. As you get closer to the entrance, uh, you'll be able to see into the site. Um, but it's a pretty significant climb from fly road up, uh, I don't have the exact elevation number, we can look at the grading plans on there. Uh, we do have, uh, a retaining wall along the back of this parking lot, it's about ten feet high. Um, and then we have a smaller retaining wall over here to save. That was about four feet high, I believe. So, uh, and then we have, we have like a one-on-three slope off the back of the parking lot, um, you know. To meet natural grades as best as possible, because some of those grades are like one, one and a half, they're pretty steep back in there, and. You know, as you're aware, there's a lot of large streams in there too. So. Every foot you approach, you start to really chase great weight there, so, so we've, we've done our best to try to work with a natural grade with the site layout. And the parking layout to try to, uh, avoid impacting, uh, that hillside going towards, to fly road as much as possible. And maintain the natural, the natural buffer, and then any place we're impacting, landscaping, uh, is filling in between. So again, you know, the front, front entrance into the building where, where, uh, every, the employees are gonna enter are, is off from the parking lot. Uh, we have two access points, one would be, um, into the main parking field for the employees, the other entrance. Um, is for truck access, uh, we have recessed truck docks in the lower corner, mechanical yard sits on that. Um, on that eastern side as well, um, you know, the trucks would enter, they could back into the docks and lead through the same entrance, certainly. Pedestrian, their cars could go through there as well, emergency access could go through there as well. And then, you know, as we mentioned, there's some pedestrian connectivity between bone and joint there, um, we've shown some trail systems around the ponds, things like that. For people to be able to, be able to enjoy.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm wrestling with. Is that we've still effectively turned our back. I mean, I understand that the employee entrance side of it, but the presentation side of the building, which you're seeing from. The access road or from four eighty-one is the back of the building. Right?
It is the back of the, would you like to see the elevations that we?
We will in a second, I just wanna, I wanna understand that.
It is the back of the, I, yes, I mean, if you wanna consider the main entrance of the building as, as the front, but I, I believe the aesthetics of the building.
No, I'm, I'm, I've seen the, you know, I think it is, it is wrapped, I'm just. Functionally looking at it, you know, bone and, bone and joint presents itself towards forty-one. You know, here, your front door and your front access is pointed into the hillside internal to the lot, we're looking at the back of it, your. Your dumpsters, your drone landing pad, all of that is on the access road side of it, so it's right on.
No, it's, it's all on the fly road side. So any, any, any of the, the trash compactors and dumpsters and stuff would be located down in the truck well, which is recessed, so it's below retaining walls. Screened on three sides, uh, drone landing pad is in, also in this front corner. Um, so that's also on the road side, there's really nothing, the, the only thing on the fly road side is all natural vegetation, so we have. A pretty, again, I mentioned the, the bio retention areas, and there is a, a little patio outside the cafeteria area for the employees. Um, and it's pretty heavily landscaped, um, it's like a, like a rain garden bio retention, you've seen, you know. Um, some wild, wild native grasses, some trees and stuff like that, so there's really nothing in the, on the, the four eighty-one side that's. Like obtrusive to, to see, no parking field, no dumpsters, no wall, you know. The other, this, there's a pretty significant screening wall that's proposed around the mechanical yard that masks the building.
And then how do we get people from the other parking field down through the building?
So we would, we would propose a connection, walkway connection through there.
And they'd walk all the way around the building?
They, yes, they would have to walk in, so we all, we'll end up having sidewalk, crosswalk in connection in the building.
Why does the, the drone landing pad have to go where you're putting it?
Uh, it's, it's, it was designed in conjunction with the department at Upstate that's overseeing the drones in terms of how to handle the specimens that are coming in on this, and how they're got brought into the building and then processed. It's a, it's an op, it was an operational design.
So if, if.
As well as with safety and approach and, and flying of them.
What's that, what's the reasoning for that safety right next to the entrance?
In the middle of the parking field?
Yeah.
No, I'm asking, I'm just asking to understand the safety component of that.
Versus putting it around the corner away from the parking spaces.
He said versus putting it around the corner away from the parking spaces.
Uh, it was, the, the, the Upstate, um, has a whole drone division. And they were given this and worked with our architects and specifically spec where they wanted it in relationship to how the employees and all these specimens and how the couriers would be interact.
Where are the drones coming in from?
Multiple counties.
So you wouldn't put it up on the roof, for example? They're coming from different directions?
No, they, we did, they, that was explored and, uh, the way they designed it. They wanted on the first, they wanna bring, bring the specimens in and handled in, um, on the first floor.
Well, I guess if, if the board, I'm speaking for myself at the moment, but if, if the positioning of that needed to move to another location and there was some redesign work, you know, that, that may be an outcome of the site plan review. To get that away from the, the front entrance, the screening around, that does seem a little bit unfriendly when it comes to the front entrance to the building. And maybe there's some redesign of some of the internal spaces to accommodate that, that may be necessary.
So they're bringing the samples in through the front door, same as?
No, there's a, there, there's.
I see a man door by the pad.
Yeah, there's, there's actually a, a door that accesses.
Main access is, it's right here, the drone entrance and all the couriers and all their samples and then driven to the site will be coming in right through here. And that's where all these one examples will be processed and distributed and where it's.
So all the samples are driven to the site and they're brought into the parking lot to go through that door? So what's the, I thought they were brought in through the truck area?
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
I didn't think there were any, I mean, do you have a bank of delivery spots?
No, I mean, that, that's part of their employee part is their couriers.
They're temporary?
Yeah.
They come in?
There are already 273 accounts for temporary couriers that are coming and going, they'll make new deliveries.
How, you know, what's the, what's the volume of deliveries per, per hour, per day? What's coming and going? Seems like quite a pinch point to have.
Right at that. Cross right there. So what are the truck deliveries now?
Supply. Yeah.
Right. Good. Right? Something to consider. While we're talking about parking cars, TIS has been completed? Yes. I think this, this needs to be updated based on, that TIS needs to be updated based on the TTM project, if I understand.
That the county.
Yeah, the, the TTM project's now in place. So you're behind this, so now your number need to count the, the TTM. So I, I can't remember who did your TIS.
Gordon.
Gordon? So.
Oh, Gordon Stansberry, yeah, yeah.
So you can update the, the TIS to now count for TTM's project down Fly Road.
Um, you also need a web coordination. Like you to talk to Centro about getting a bus stop on the corner of Fly and this access road. There is one across the street right now, but we'd like one coordinated for this side of the street and bringing the sidewalk out to Fly Road for that access. So please coordinate with Centro on that one.
Um, if we, this, where do you want, where would you want the sidewalk to begin and end? Obviously, not at Fly Road, where do you want it to start?
Uh, it should connect to your internal, cause I think you have a path that connects all the way down to Bone and Joint, right? Do you?
Sidewalk? No.
There's a, there's a path.
Well, we have a, we have a path through by the tree there.
Right, so you got the tree, you got a sidewalk path that goes all along the front of your building through the parking field, back up to that access point.
Yeah.
At the north, so from that access point to Fly Road.
Continue that out, okay.
Right, so that somebody has the ability to get off a bus and get at least to your project property there. You know, and if they needed to, they could make their way all the way to Bone and Joint.
Yeah, so.
How would they know?
To extend this, extend this walkway out.
To where?
To Bone and Joint.
I would say, I would say what?
No, practically speaking, how do, how do they know that that pathway would get them to Bone and Joint without some sort of wayfinding or some directional signage too? I'm just thinking ahead.
That's a, a valid question. But Centro, they're making that connection so that you guys are connected to that.
Okay.
Um. Mark, do you have any additional comment? Mark, I'm assuming you're still on. Do you have any site related comments?
Uh, I, I don't think anything that needs to be reviewed here. I'm assuming they'll be given the written comment if they haven't already.
Yeah, Mark has done his review, I think Alana.
If there's any issues or questions, they can obviously get ahold of me.
Okay, yeah, we, we haven't seen those yet, Mark, thanks.
Yeah, I think Alana was.
I, I sent them yesterday afternoon.
Okay.
It's planning and Mark's comments, so it was, they're preliminary, there'll be more. Um, the SWIP hasn't been reviewed yet, and as things progress, there'll, there'll be more comments.
So additionally, I think we have on the agenda, Jamie will correct me if I'm wrong, but we're declaring lead agency.
Correct.
At this Thursday, you don't need to be there for it. You know, we're just gonna declare a lead agency on that one. Um, and then we need.
Excuse me, we didn't talk about lead agency. What's the idea? Do they, Jim, do they ask for co-lead or something, or?
Yes.
Besides ask for.
You say that, I can't.
Oh, sorry. We're, we're applying for IDA.
Right.
They usually ask for co-lead, co-agency or?
No, they don't.
No?
Yeah. The, um, but we'll, we'll send them the notice.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, they have, it, it's, it, it's rare. If, if they do, I'll, I'll let you know, but I think I only once had them do lead agency. They usually just let us go with it.
And then this will be a type one, so we're gonna need to do seeker, uh, we'll have 30 day from notice that's in there. And this is where I was going to at the beginning in terms of timeline. You know, with the 30 day, it'll put us to the first meeting in October before we can do seeker at that point. And then any of the other stuff, so.
If, if, if we're ready and if we wanna bifurcate it, right? So that's another thing, um, because the, there's certainly going to be variances. I'm not sure what they are, what the extent is, but, um, you know, probably in the next month or so, that's going to be fleshed out and then it goes to ZBA with a recommendation, so. They may not even be on, on October agenda for ZBA. Remember, they only meet once a month. It's already too late for the September, though. We kinda have to look at that timeline. This 30 day lead agency notice on IDA, I, I think they'll see lead agency. If they don't, that's another whole thing, so.
Right, that's a.
Right. So also, i- if you can, um, I assume that what you have on your, um, EAF for involved agencies is all there is. There's nothing else I need to put on that's been looked at, or I just ask you to look at it.
Yeah, we, we need double check, but I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, can I, I just have one more parking follow up question. So the EV chargers, I'm totally on board with, with, uh, with that development. Are those, are they intended to be private use? Are they public use paid?
Strictly for the couriers.
Yeah, strictly for the couriers.
Yeah.
Got it. Um, how does that? All right, so that is counted in your total parking count for on-site?
Correct.
Well, are those, are those designated spots so people can't park there?
Well, the couriers are their points, so they're, they're the people that are.
A courier, so you're gonna, you gotta further define it that it's a courier with an EV, right? So a courier can come in with a gas powered car and park in a courier spot that, you know, otherwise that EV spot has to stay open for a courier with an EV car, right?
They, they, they take the cars out the other day and they charge, they leave them overnight charged on those, on those EV spots.
Okay.
So are you guys thinking that all of the other counties only come here from drones? Or won't they have their own couriers also?
They will be, uh, samples from outside, within and with outside the county will be both drone as well as courier. The majority of them, oh, in the next, say, five years is gonna be driven, uh, by, by courier, drone technology, uh, and, and percentage of the, of how things are transporting will grow, I'd say, over the next decade.
So, so maybe when we look at this, right, the parking is expanded with an understanding that it'll shrink because of the drones, right? So you have to prepare for not having the drones at this time. But in five years, potentially.
I, I'm, I'm not sure you're gonna see it in five.
But, but Doug, I think as like the drones increase, the employees will have to increase. Cause I think their plan is to get more, like, from their first couple meetings, the, the plan was to get, you know, more of New York State coming to pathology and, you know, like selling their service rather than just doing the hospital cause they wanna do outlying hospitals pathology also.
Actually, they are already generating 53% of their revenue pathology departments come outside of, uh, I don't know, right now. The additional volume, uh, their intention is to be, to be, to be, to handle second versions. If, if this building actually, I'm ordering it, uh, it's working, is completely designed. There is no, um, flex or, 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 uh, design space right now. And, and design is already completed, playwork. The actual equipment that's being spec is already in a flexible form. They, they, they did not have the luxury of building any excess capacity. Excess capacity is gonna be in second versions, whether it is.
So it will be a 24/7 facility?
They will not have, they won't have 270 people necessarily working.
Yeah, I believe in our cover letter, we, we broke down, they have provided information under, you know, I mean, they have 273 people, but the, the way the shifts stagger, certainly the first shift has the most, the night shift surplus, but that, that, it should kinda show the, you know, maybe, well, I don't think it's 270, I think it's like 250 or 55 or something like that. So we have extra spaces, but, um, we, we provided that information in the cover letter, out of the background shifts and stuff.
Any other site questions at this point? clarity? Say we'll get the elevation real quick.
Can everybody see that one?
Yep.
Okay.
This, this is the main, just to help you orientate, this is the main, uh, road that's gonna go up to where Bone and Joint is. And this would be the first entrance into the side, so this is the building that'll be facing the road. And ultimately facing 481, I guess.
41, yeah.
This is the 481 facing side. These are the, the bio retention areas, you know, along the front here. So you can see it's pretty clean and educated, almost part of like, um, in some instances. So the, the main entrance into the parking lot here, parking lot in the back, um, which is a lot of glare. Go. Cut this one out. So this is looking at, here's the main entrance. Again, here's these bio retention, your road to Bone and Joint back here. This is the entrance into the parking lot. This is where the drone landing pad is here in the front.
And this will be where the couriers will be taking all their samples in right there. And the main entrance, obviously, you can see it's.
Yeah.
Is there a screen wall around the drone landing spot I thought I saw on the site plan that's not on this render?
Um, I'm not sure where they landed on it. Initially, they were talking about the potential need for that. We had a small seating wall, screening wall around it. Um, I, I'm not, I'd have to double check with the team to see if that was still necessary, um, or not.
Somebody from standing on the pad when a drone's coming down on you?
Yeah.
We'll see.
The, we, we'll certainly, they, they'll get, I'm sure everyone will make sure that's addressed. There's even been, most recently, some technology talked about on the side of the building, could we make it a garage door? And could they then fly the drones into, into, uh, interior garage? We, we entertain and listen on a lot of different upgrades every two, three, four, five weeks from the Upstate as they, as this whole process evolves, so. If, if, if there, we are gonna have an outside one, which I'm sure we're gonna have some production on it, but we'll keep you the board informed as this thing develops. And then th- this elevation obviously reflects.
Yeah, the truck entrance, main drive, uh, leading to Bone and Joint and fate, the front facing, again, facing 481.
With the, that's that screen wall you were talking about on the left hand side, just over the top of the truck?
This is here, yeah.
There any separation between the drive aisle and that screen?
No, just curved line, basically.
There was a.
But it's not a lot of drive there.
There was, there was a curious note in one of the drawings that said the screen wall is designed by others. Maybe that was a typo.
Well, they're probably using like a pre manufactured panel design that matched the building or something, so they don't design it. Oh, you mean on the site plan? Yeah, that's because we don't, we, by others meaning architect and structural designing the screen wall.
Okay.
Not, not civil site.
It's designed in the package.
Correct. Yes, yes, that would be part of the architectural package, not part of the civil package, like typical fences or, or walls, retaining walls by others, meaning by structural, not by civil plans, so we refer to the architectural, yeah, yeah, sorry.
I mean, I'm curious about that screen wall in its proximity to the drive aisle and how it doesn't get.
Trashed.
Trashed. Even that one corner right. Even that one corner right there, just.
Begging to get hit.
Yeah. Is there? What, what is going on in that space? If you go back to this, that one. What's going on in that space that prevents you from creating any sort of a separation?
That didn't work? Guess I can't do it then. Maybe we do have, I might have missed one there, I think we might have. We do have a slight buffer there. Now that I, I, I look at it, so there is, there is, I don't know, it looks to me like it's about five feet, uh, between the curb line. And so we have a, you know, we have a thirty foot wide drive, so that's another thing that we do have here, is we have a thirty foot wide drive. We do maintain pedestrian, a six foot wide, like, strike area along that thirty foot because, there you go.
Yeah.
So here, the, the screen wall would be here and there is a, but there is a bit of a, a green buffer there, so. So I think we're, we're all set there. Plus, it's, I think in that view, it looked like the trucks were turning and they were going to hit that. I mean, they're in a straight section here, so the screen wall is, is off the, off the curb line, as you can tell. In this view. So thi- this drive's thirty feet wide, I mean, it's essentially, in theory, mostly for trucks, which are, aren't going to be very frequent, um, for deliveries, because they don't have that kind of frequent delivery through the truck access. And then we have this, you know, this six foot access, and that's mainly because, you know, they have the cafeteria up here and, and some folks might want to, you know, walk around the ponds, things like that, so we provide that.
If they have a cafeteria, they're getting daily deliveries of food and pathology does a ton of testing and shipping and they need a ton of equipment that is disposable to do that. So I think they do have a lot of deliveries for supplies and food. I would, I would just not say they don't have a lot of deliveries.
And that is fully curved?
It is.
Driving right against that wall the whole way.
We will, we will put some, we'll put some more attention on that whole wall concept.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's labeled mechanical yard right now, but I don't know what's happening out in that mechanical yard.
Well, there's going to be a transformer, there's going to be a backup generator, there's going to be their AC AC towers, you know, cooling units.
So how tall is the screen versus how tall, and go back to that, that rendering?
Yeah. I'm not, I'm behind the, the screen wall. It's certainly adequate to cover the stuff that's in there.
Well, if you have cooling towers, those are going to be tall, those things are going to be tall. And nothing, I mean, right now, nothing shown in there.
Yeah.
So, you, you might have all of that stuff in there, those things may be eight feet tall, the screen. But your, your cooling towers and all that, I mean, they're going to be twelve, thirteen, fourteen feet tall. In there. Does it have a little
You know, one of the things that made me miss, what made me miss
What's misleading about this here is that this part of the building is actually that lower, it's that one story. This is three story here, and that's one story. It's just a site, it's just the
When rendering, I don't want the rendering to drive, um, what in fact would may or may not be there. Why don't we provide the board a lot more information about this whole section in terms of height, what's inside it, what the walls are, what the separation are, and even address all the questions that are, you know. Cause I can't, you know, uh, we're going to put cooling towers inside, you know, what's the roof look like, where are the rest of the panels? Questions we're going to do about.
Well, and that's, and that's, I was, I was getting there, you got ahead of me on that one, is that these, as well as any of your elevations, should show mechanical equipment. All that rooftop furniture should be shown in there and shown accurately so that we understand what can be seen, what can't be seen. I mean, is the, on top of the building, is that a mechanical screen?
Yes.
It is, so that screens some of the equipment that's up there, so it'd be good in the elevation with that screen up there, just to show that none of that equipment is getting all the top of that mechanical screen.
I, I gotta look at it, but I think the elevation plan that we submitted shows some of that with the package. These are, we didn't submit these rendering, but we split it some regular showing that stuff.
I think it does a good visual presentation of Lloyd, like, where that raises some questions.
Yeah, so it does show the, the the screen up there, it just doesn't
Has the Well, in theory, you should always see the screen.
Yes. Theory. In theory, but so what we've, what we've what we've asked is that you're just dashing in, you know, where the height is and the size is, so that we, I mean, cause you can show the screen up here and then also you put some equipment up there, and it's every feet above the top of that. We didn't do our diligence, so looking at the equipment and sitting back curve, how tall is it in comparison to that screen? And then certainly, if there's anything on that low one story parking. Or not parking, but one story portion of the building.
Tug it in here.
Yeah.
Other, other comments from the board on the elevations? And I think this is in reality kind of the first reboot that we've had to kind of look at some of the elevations, so. Is there, I mean, and, and I'd ask that you give some consideration as we continue to plan the parking on the other side. Is there an opportunity for staff or visitors or whoever, you know, there's probably not a ton of visitors, but staff to go in that east side of the building? The, the quote unquote back of the building?
You mean in, in here?
Right, and also because the, the access that you have shown for the parking is, is not directly across from the drive aisle on this side, but pushed further down, so somebody coming out of that parking lot is going to have to get across the street.
Yeah.
And instead of walking all the way around the building, is there another opportunity or can one be incorporated so that you know, if you don't feel like you have a ten thousand steps to get to the front door?
Alright, that, that's, uh
Yeah, I'm not sure about logistics of
I'll, I'll take it back to the architect and the
Yeah.
There's certainly be either secrets nor, but I don't know, you know, security wise, it's just how people have to enter, things like that.
Could double up as a, as a emergency exit.
Any other comments? Anyone left online?
Yep. I'm here.
Still here. It's a, it is a pretty building.
Yeah, it is, I agree, it is a handsome building. The, the facade, the rain screen, the panels, that hasn't changed from previous designs?
No, I, I mean, some of the color schemes and stuff on these are a little different than we initially submitted. But I believe overall, yeah, everything's really, they're the same.
Alright, so taken with all comments, get those, you know, incorporated. Would love a clean, updated, fresh set. You know, things that have changed between, I mean, I'm looking at elevations here, which are from February.
Sure.
Now, versus this, make sure that things have been coordinated and updated so that we have a clean package we're reviewing in there. Lana said that she sent you all the design and engineering comments, so take a, take a look at those.
So the only thing I'm trying to, I just want to make sure we're clear on is like the future, like the future parking build out and stuff, how, what level of design information we have to provide for this phase of the project? Because is it a full, like a full on, we need to design all the utilities and storm and, cause that's a pretty considerable effort. Beyond the projects from, you know, the bridge or
I think the storm needs to be incorporated, at least your calculations that make sure that if this thing is ever built out.
Like impermeable versus slumming, yeah, we can
How is it going to impact either the ponds that are there or if it's going to negatively impact all the, the retention basins that are there, then you're going to have to say, well, because of that, we're going to do, you know, underground cisterns, or store it some other way. That needs to be thought out, that needs to be planned.
Yeah, that's a requirement.
Right, so the, the parking, I want at least, at minimum, you to show us that your slopes work through there, that you're not, that you can grade it accordingly.
Gotcha.
You know, that we're not getting some huge
Yeah.
swing and grade and stuff that's in there.
Good schematic level design that shows that it's feasible, yeah, and there's
A hundred percent feasible, that they're, the correct parking stall size, maxed it out. You know, so that we can, we can make the strongest argument
Yeah.
to ZBA for a reduction. You know, if, if we're making a big ask, that's not only big for this board to chew, but for ZBA to approve. But if we can show that we have a plan for maxing it out, and it's only a small ask in terms of the reduction, small. That's a lot easier. So, show that we can, we can build it out, and then we can look at building it out, you know, as, as phased, and would ask that you set it up that way in your, in your final package, so that, you know, we, well, I said we, but the office of planning has the ability to say, alright, we'll implement phase one, implement phase two, implement phase three, and so on.
Is, is it reasonable that phase one might be, um, storing water underground and, and paving over those, uh, detention bonds on next to Bonin joint? To try to add space next to the building first, and then go across it, go across the space for the next phase two, three, and last one, four.
Are you asking about making that your reserve parking, your first phase of reserve parking, or actually building the parking now?
Effectively, I think my understanding is where those retention basins are, what he's looking to do, or what he's suggesting is turning that into a reserve parking field. That in the event we ever say you need to add more parking, that's the first one that they implement, which means those retention basins become underground cistern kind of development, and then if they have to go to a phase two, it'd be, it goes across the street at that point.
Not sure, oh yeah, so here, this is actually one concept of that. So I thought it was.
If that's going to be reserve parking though, you, you can't, I don't think you can have that as drainage now and say in the future, we would put that underground. The drainage, drainage would have to start underground, that would be a huge project to implement that reserve parking.
Um, really? I mean, I don't, I don't think so. I mean, you could replace a detention system, we've done it. In fact, I'm doing it for St. John Fisher right now. I mean, there's a existing pond, they don't want to see anymore, and we're designing an underground system. I mean, essentially, the hole is almost there. Uh, we come in, we fill it in with stone to the right elevation, they put in the chamber system and they build a parking lot over it. So there's not even a massive earthwork endeavor in that. So I don't, I don't think it's a huge effort.
How many spaces? Reserve parking, you have to show that it can be built as parking. I don't, I don't think we've ever used a drainage basin saying that area is reserved parking. Well, well, Lana, I think it goes back to what Nate was saying, they would kind of have to show us, cause I agree with you, I was thinking, well, you know, it seems like that's more expensive than putting in a parking lot. I think somebody would say, well, we can asphalt over here rather than this, but, so I think that goes back to what Nate was saying. Things that, that is possible and ready to go kind of thing, so we could say, okay, this is their phase one that they had planned and that's what we would go with.
You would certainly have to do the stormwater calcs in advance as part of the approval for that to work. It wouldn't just be, the parking fits, we'll figure out the stormwater later, it's got to be figured out in advance. Right? Otherwise, we
No, I mean, I project.
The, the code says that the reserve parking area may be landscaped and reserved for future parking. I, I don't think you can have drainage there and consider it reserved. If that's what the code says, I agree, I agree with Lana then.
Yeah, I mean, uh
The, the way that it sounds, the way that sounds Lana, they would have to put the cisterns in now and put the, the grading in now over them, and then that would be landscaped and ready to be paved. Correct. I mean, I, I think that's how it's always been done, is the reserve parking areas have basically been lawn or some sort of landscaped area that could easily be turned into parking if it needed to be.
This is only and I guess, you know, practical standpoint, when we're talking about it, this is Upstate failing and having to shut down the pathology building. And finally, we're trying to re-lease it, maybe somebody who wants to space wants more.
Well, how long is the upstate lease going to be for?
Very long time.
What is that in your world?
Well, we usually don't dispose economists, but it's a fifteen year lease with renewals. With renewals. Okay, let's
What, what is your cur, what is your current projected need for parking? And, and by projected, I mean, in the next fifteen years, how much parking do you think you're going to need on the site for this user?
The two hundred and seventy spots that we've allocated have been reviewed and approved, um, and are contractually, uh, spoken about in the lease that we have with, with the state and Orson New York.
And is there any idea that there would need to be more?
There is no, no requirement on our part to provide additional spaces.
No, that's not my question. My, my question is, the user, like, has, says we need two hundred and seventy-nine spaces. This is an unusual user, we don't know anything about it. Do they actually need two hundred and seventy-nine, or do they need fifty spots and, but we're projecting for two seventy-nine in the next fifteen years? Do you see the discussion I'm bringing up?
The, the pathology department made a determination of, they completely designed this hundred and eight thousand square foot building. They know their employee count per shift over the three shifts, and that took, turned into the requirement of two hundred and seventy market spots.
Do you know how many parking, or how many staff on the first shift?
Yeah, here it is, right here. So this is, this is the cover letter, they had it typically would have a maximum of two hundred and sixty-five employees at any one time uh, during shift overlaps, so first shift, two hundred and twenty-nine employees, second shift, uh, will have twenty-five and the third will have twenty. So that, you know, you can see the second, third shifts are significantly less, but there occasionally is some overlaps, people working extra and stuff.
This, this whole building was a build as soup, um, and we followed all the recommendations and requests by Upstate. And so what, what goes into the building, what's being used in the building, the equipment needs and the employee needs are all dictated by, by the tenant being SUNY Upstate.
Yeah, in fact, the lease requires the equipment to be included as part of the build out, that's a fully furnished, fully operational to state, so their specs at the time of turnover, so they've included, you know, custom built equipment, custom built lab spaces and all, uh, for their designs to meet their needs for the future. So this is going to be an updated, state of the art, custom build.
If you could potentially have two hundred and sixty-five employees there at once, how does it work with those care, those courier spaces that always have a car in them and are already occupied? Where you can't have employees parking?
The courier employees are part of that employment number. The courier employees are part of that employment number.
Right.
But do they take a car home at night, or are they bringing their own car to park? In the parking lot?
They bring their car in and park, and then take a, a courier out.
Okay, so the, but those courier spaces are always occupied by a vehicle, so they can't be used for employee parking, correct?
It's a one to one.
It's a one to one.
Right.
An employee pulls in with their car, they park in an open parking spot, they go over and get into a courier car, and then drive out.
But nothing else can park in that courier spot while they have the courier car out, right? Because other employees can't park there.
It's not actually a true one to one, because if there's a car in the courier spot, and you're coming in, you're parking next to it to take this car out, if that's, if the lot's full, you've got two cars that are trying to take over the spot, like.
And the courier spot can't be utilized by other employees, because it's only for the courier cars.
I also understood that couriers were coming from other medical facilities too, and dropping off, correct? It's not.
Yeah. And, and so if this is gonna be a state of the art, you know, facility, they're also gonna have, like, visitors. Do we have visitor parking? Like, they're, they're gonna have people come to look at the facility, to inspect the facility, to have meetings there. I, I just assume that we should have some kind of access.
Yeah, Jamie, they have, at least in, in the count that they have here, they have five visitor spaces.
Yeah, we have designated on the point.
So.
I just, yeah. Five. I, I'm, yeah, I'm just amazed how tight it is, because I just imagine that everything, they're just gonna have more people on more shit. It just gets a little worrisome, but I, I like the idea that we would have a space available to extend the parking if needed.
If we, sorry, going back to the counts that are on there. Says they typically have two hundred and sixty five max at any one time during shift overlaps. How many employees are on the first shift? Two twenty nine?
Correct.
So two twenty nine plus some visitor spots, plus the if they're at two seventy three, that's fifty spots that should theoretically be vacant. And then when that first and second shift overlap happens, that's where you get up to two hundred and sixty five. So you got eight spots that are open, and those are, those eight spots that are theoretically open are not inclusive of the five visitor, the courier spots, the other one, they should have eight that are still vacant, theoretically vacant at the peak time of heat. Is that correct?
Yeah, and then assumes everybody drives, nobody doubles up.
Yeah, they, they, they mentioned, yeah, they, they provided, they said usually they have ten to twenty nine staff that are not at the facility due to, you know, vacations, personal time, et cetera. They have staffs that carpool, drop off.
That's, that's a different issue, I think.
How many courier spaces are there?
Uh, well, there's, there's no designated courier spots other than the EV charging stations, which would be for courier vehicles that need to be charged.
Which is how many?
So somebody, the courier from Madison that comes in.
But how many spaces is that?
Could theoretically have to park way on the far part of the apex, because there's no designated courier spots.
And walk in.
And walk all the way in with whatever.
What if employees have an electric vehicle? They're not allowed to use the charging stations?
That, that, that is not something we've considered or addressed. This is a hundred percent occupied building.
Twenty five.
Controlled and run by Upstate. If they wanna let their employees charge their car, that's gonna be their choice. That, that's not something we're involved with. There's twenty five EV stations or spaces.
So you're really only providing about two hundred and forty eight spaces that are not occupied by the courier cars? Is that correct?
It sounds about right.
Yep.
So I wonder, I wonder if Upstate has a fleet of twenty courier cars or something that they're planning at those EV stations? So then those are gone doing deliveries in the day, but other cars won't be able to park there in the day, because if the courier car comes back, it's going to need to charge and park in that same spot. Like if it were a one for one, the courier could park in the spot that they take the car out of, but since it's a charging station, I assume it shouldn't.
That's an operational decision on their part.
Yes, no. It's also a planning decision on our part, is making sure that
We got enough.
We got enough. Yeah, and operational, I understand, but planning wise, we gotta make sure that that flow works, that we're not getting some huge backup, or you said how many, twenty spots?
Twenty five.
Twenty five? You know, those twenty five that are sitting empty during the day, you know, when you have this, this shift change that's happening, you only have eight flex spots. So, I mean, the, the transaction for the courier, they pull into the spot, they run in with a cooler, they drop it off, and they leave, right? Is that fair to say? So right now, there's not really a place for them to even do that, they gotta double park somewhere, or find a spot.
Pretty short walking distance, EV spots. You know what?
You know, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking of circulation.
I'll end up the conversation with the courier people and address these issues.
Yeah.
Ask questions like, who can utilize those twenty five stations during the day while the cars are out? Are incoming people able to use that, drop that? What happens if the ship's out?
To be honest, I see, I see a pull off lane for double parking, that courier fifteen minute load.
Yeah, even with like a canopy, right?
A canopy. Pull off, where the drone's laying on top of it. That would work. Okay. Um, I think you've got lots of information and things to address, and we're excited about working through this with you guys, so. That's all I got. You got questions for us?
No, so you have the meeting Thursday, and then.
And then we've gotta get to the point where we can get seeker issued, and then that thirty day clock starts.
So is there any, is there any stops between now and, and then in terms of trying to get?
I think while, while, yeah, while seeker's out, if you guys rework this stuff, and we wanna do another session,
Yeah.
we can, we can manage another one to try and answer some of the questions that came up today.
Sure.
You know, and, and we'll do what we can to keep
Yeah.
the process moving and be prepared, but there are steps that we're gonna have to kind of go through that are just out of our control, and so.
Understood, yeah.
What impediments do we have with seeker?
None that I'm aware of.
Can you say that?
Sorry, Jamie, what?
What, what did you, what was that question about seeker?
He said what impediments?
Or was that a joke?
Have a seeker, I, I, I don't believe any other than the variants. I think everything else is pretty straightforward, there's no environmental concerns, the traffic study was fine. We're gonna add some information, hopefully that's not gonna change any mitigation, but everything else, utilities, stuff like that are all there, so I don't, I don't see anything seeker wise, it should, should be outstanding.
Well, we'll be reviewing it.
Yeah, sure.
With Mark, and I, okay.
Yeah, no, I just mean, I, I don't see any red flags, I don't, you know, offhand.
Alright. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we all gotta go, yeah?
No.
Talked too soon. Thank you, bye bye.
Murphy, could you get my check on the draft?
Yeah, yeah. What's that?
It's on draft.
Yes. Is it in here?
There you go, if you can take it out now.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
When you're shutting the door, when it's interrupt, but I was like hello.
You're such a tough ride.
Still recording.
That's a good thing.
Yeah.
Still recording.